Council is five thirty on Monday, March twenty eighth. Council acknowledges and pays respects to its main and original community as their traditional and original owners have continued the castings of this name. All persons in attendance are advised that it's council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. The meeting will also be live streamed on council's YouTube channel. Item one is apologies and we have a quick call in to councillors tonight. Item two is declarations of interest and ask for our own declarations of interest to be written on the open titles agenda. Item three is procedural matters. Item three point minus confirmation of minutes of the February council meeting. Do I have a move please?
Second.
Nothing further, Madam Mayor.
Me and you, procedure man.
Any comments, questions from the House? I'll ask councillor Alexia to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion all eyes on paper, please say aye.
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 Motion's carried now missing. Item three point two is public question time and item three point two point one is responses to questions raised at prior meetings and there is a recommendation there. Do you want to have a move please?
So moved.
Mister Murphy, thank you.
Second.
Councillor Perry, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Ah, merely procedure man.
Councillor Perry?
Nothing further, ma'am.
Any other comments, questions? Item last, councillor, you may put your cards.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. The motion all eyes on paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried now missing. Item three point two point two are questions on notice from the public and again there is a recommendation there for those responses. Do you want to move please?
You do, ma'am.
Councillor Lecock, thank you. Seconda.
Second.
Councillor Lecock?
Nothing to add.
Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, nothing further.
Any other comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Lecock to close today.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion all eyes on paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried now missing. Item three point two point three is questions without notice from the public and this is set to improve the willingness of the ballot to unfortunately give us the good they know and ask any question please. You have any questions for the day?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Rodney Russell, two two five Steel Street, Devonport. Financial assistance scheme, minor grants, the Devonport Cricket Club Gateway to Use the Care and the Rotary Club of Devonport North all received money for stools, play equipment or picnic tables but care flight were unsuccessful in receiving money for vital trauma training. Question, for what reason?
Mister Russell, that is an argument will be discussed in the agenda tonight so I won't have anything to add to this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Community services report. Partnership agreements, rants arts, five year rental agreement in time funding, no dollar amount shown. Question, so would it be rent free for the next five years?
No, there is a agreement in place that was approved by council. But I was here, there will be some revenue paid over the next five years.
Not shown though.
It certainly will be in our documents in past, in its meetings if you're asking us to refine right in the process and that's.
That's okay, thank you very much. I see where council are using devices to monitor the occupancy of our public toilets. Question, can you give me some idea of how you are doing this while still maintaining the privacy and dignity of persons using these facilities?
I'll have to ask. Final items that thank you, Mister Russell.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Trevor Smith, Southend Glen Court, Devonport. Dear Chairperson, before submitting my questions, could I have written replies to my questions rather than having verbal answers? I wish to submit this question. At the traffic light intersection with Blubber Street, Sorrel Street and Don Rose, you recently had green coloured markings painted onto the bitumen. What was the purpose of this? What was the cost to the rate payers of Devonport to have this done? At the intersection of Watkinson Street and Don Road, you have similar markings in a red colour. These red safety markings have faded significantly. When will all these markings be renewed? Last month's council meeting, a fellow rate payer asked a question about the tiles falling off the indoor pillar of Splash Aquatic Centre. What is the reason why the tiles on the indoor fifty metre pool are failing after only being replaced recently as three years ago? What is going to be the cost to the rate payers of Devonport to replace those tiles? Is this issue going to be occurring every couple of years as it is now? Thank you.
August, January twenty three, Watkinson Street, Devonport. At what percentage of the car plots fill in the multi-storey car park be profitable?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. Just before answering that, the definition of profitable, Mister Janney, what? Well. Council sets parking fees on a holistic basis across all of the parking car parks in the city and generate revenue across the city. They look at the visual car parks as a profit on those car parks in the long run.
Well, build a multi-storey car park that costs X dollars. So take that number and look at the revenue received on the car plots filled as a percentage of the cost to build.
Through you, ma'am. We can provide just January with the data that we do collecting relation income and construction cost. Like a valuable line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
God Will, we got it. Eleven cock applies Devonport. Mayor and Sir Councillors, excuse me. Mayor and Councillors, it was commendable that council recognised and supported the citizens of Ukraine during the Harmony Week as reported, illuminating the Paranapal Centre in blue and white and displaying the Ukrainian flag on the big screen in Market Square. Can I suggest that this initiative continue to be reviewed each month? Also, would council consider including flying some Ukrainian flags in the C V lead and one on the big mast at Bass Strait Maritime Centre? Indeed, this is an opportunity during these exceptional times to show ongoing compassion and make Harmony Week more than just a seven day wonder. I ask this because there appears to be no end to the polar state of affairs, the sheer barbarism and the damnable war crimes being perpetrated. And Mayor, if you have decided not to continue supporting the Ukrainians as was done during Harmony Week, would it be out of order to permit a councillor tonight to move a suspension of standing orders so as to allow those councillors here present make a democratic decision tonight and vote on for what I have suggested?
Thank you for your suggestion, Mister Velkop. We did discuss it with councillors when we made the decision that we made and at this point I won't be making any chances to argue because it's said in right. We certainly sympathise and we certainly understand the sentiment behind it. However, we did feel that the, I guess the gesture that was made was as far as we could predict at this point. They can choose to make donations to various, to their costs etc, which is an option indeed for people and individuals to support the people in Ukraine. But we felt that this was an important, important last analysis.
This was a full council thing.
This was a discussion with all councils.
Thank you. A statement by council was published in The Advocate of the twenty fourth of November two thousand and twenty one, which contained details in regard to Charlotte Jacks Proprietary Limited, alleged non-payment of utility supply charges and also council confirmed that they had received a letter from Mister Milburn's solicitor seeking damages from council due to the failure of Charlotte Jack Proprietary Limited. As of this date, the twenty eighth of March two thousand and twenty two, has any progress been made in recouping the alleged amount owed to rate payers and what is the current position in regard to Mister Milburn's attempt to seek damages from council?
I've got none further to add at this point, Mister Velkop. There's nothing to add.
Can I ask?
There's nothing to add, there's nothing to add.
I can swing that, thank you. And I have a question, Mayor, if I may. When will the sections of the gravel pathways be completed, i.e. paved that are situated in the waterfront parkland that is now open to the public?
Through you, ma'am. Those pathways are open, open to public.
Really? You're joking.
Mister Velkop, we had your question asked and it's, thank you.
We'll go for scooters.
Thank you, Mister Velkop.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, everyone. Item three point three is questions on notice from councillors and we don't have any advice at this point. Item three point four are notices of motion and item three point four point one is an notice of motion regarding feasibility study for motion from moving present and it is supported by councillor Ennis who is moving motion. I'll ask for a seconda. Have a second, then.
Thank you, Mayor. I move this, move this motion because it's got a lot to do with the health of our community and our, and our city and the people who live within it. This idea was originally presented by Max Boils, a life member of the Devonport Surf Life Saving Club some time ago and we're fortunate to have Max here tonight, so thank you for coming on, Max. This idea was presented at an open forum called Ideas for Devonport held late last year, although it's not a new idea. It's one that's been around for a long time and we're seeking to progress it. The idea of a, a pool, a healthy place for families, individuals to use for swimming, recreation, rehabilitation, fitness and fun, and I stress in a very safe place, is, is what we're after here. It would be a unique drawcard and add to the list of amenities for people who live within our region. We are trying to make a very appealing place for people to come and live in and I think this would add to it greatly. Think I'll leave it for the man, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ennis, councillor Velkop.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to second councillor Ennis's motion of an ocean pool being built at or around the Bluff area and I do thank Max Boils for raising the idea again and of course for councillor Ennis bringing it to the council table. He's just said about the health benefits and there's certainly plenty of benefits from salt water. We know there's a lot of people that won't go out into the sea as such but would take the dip for lots of reasons in a salt water pool. Ocean swimming is very beneficial. Magnesium itself is found in salt water and that in itself reduces stress, relieves muscle aches. And ocean swimming also helps release our feel-good hormone, dopamine and serotonin, serotonin, sorry, which help to stabilise your mood and increase feelings of happiness and wellbeing. So I think we know enough about the health part of salt water and perhaps we should get some on Boklet because it is a great, a great thing to take. But this would be good, as councillor Ennis has said, for the community and hopefully it's not a huge outlay, but I'm more than happy to second the motion for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you and I will remind everyone that this motion is for council to conduct a feasibility study, engine possibility, not necessarily.
Understand, yes.
Any other speakers, motion? Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, sorry. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I'm all for supporting anything that increases the physical activity of the community and in my field study, it's something that's during most meetings. However, I feel like the Bluff has many cultural, significant cultural. It has a significant cultural presence to our society and I would be disappointed to see something that was not natural to be created in that area. I'd be very much for a pool to be built within the community somewhere but just not in that area and the money to go towards perhaps looking into the feasibility of a salt water pool being built somewhere else. I'm just wondering if I may ask the question to councillor Ennis, are you aware of any other salt water pools being built in, in the city in the last few years?
In the last?
Fifty years?
Yes.
Whereabouts would that be built?
Aye, Queensland.
Right.
There's been some build up there.
Central Coast and South Wales.
Central Coast and New South Wales, yeah.
Yeah. You know, there might be somewhere else in Devonport that might be a good spot for it and I'm sure the feasibility study would probably put those places forward but just at this point in time I will be running against it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ennis.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm going to support the motion and I commend councillor Ennis for bringing it to the table and agree with his and councillor Lecop's comments. In fact, I think tonight, I know the motion says we allocate funds for a feasibility study, I think we could even go a little bit further tonight. I think if it's the will of the all the councillors, we want this to happen and we want to contribute some funding in the twenty twenty two, twenty three budget to commence the project happening. Now, I understand there are going to be some hurdles in place because of the cultural significance of the area, but I think we need to demonstrate that it's the will of the council to commence the project, to commence the next step of the project. If the next step of the project says we can't do it because it's just too expensive, then we can pull back at that point. I think we need to show will tonight that we push on with this. It's an outstanding idea and something that Devonport would be proud of. I commend, as we said, councillor Ennis for bringing it forward and if it is the will of the council and this is successful tonight, then it's not too late to even add it to an election wishlist to advance the project even further. So, well done councillor Ennis and I'll be interested to hear what others have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I all too. Also, we'll be supporting the motion. It may sound like a significant amount of money to invest, but I think this is what councillors do. A facility like this, as councillor Ennis has pointed out, would be for the whole community and I understand it could be some cultural issues, but I think we need to speak past those to a degree and look at how this would actually have a significant benefit to the community. I know, I agree with councillor Perry, you know. If, if it stacks up, well, we should just move for the head of it. You know, I'm pretty confident it wouldn't take, it wouldn't be too difficult to find some, you know, some partners to, to join the council and progress it to the next stage if we, if the feasibility study comes back and we can get some costings and, yeah, move forward from there. I think it will be a valuable asset to the Bluff and a lot of people I've spoken to agree.
I think it's a good idea. I think it should really be looked at in conjunction with the rest of the budget. There's probably a lot of other things that probably all have been in front of us at this stage, so I'm also probably, probably it will come up in the budget process anyway, so.
Thank you, councillor Ennis.
Thank you. I'm certainly not adverse to the idea and I appreciate Max coming to the forum and bringing it up. You know, he wishes he'd brought it up a little bit stronger so many years ago, I'm sure. And I, I think the whole point of the feasibility study is, yeah, there is, the area is culturally significant and could be sensitive to this factor and I think that's what the study's going to be all about, is finding out all the whys and wherefores and how to and how not to and, and I would be very interested in seeing that report, so I'm looking forward to seeing it progress. Thank you.
Councillor Alexia?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I too will be supporting the motion. I think that you might find this quite a neat thing for just Devonport for Tasmania as well, so it could be another stepping stone for us, you know, having a spirit Tasmania dot V M, maybe something like this as well, it's going to be a drawcard for the city. I'll support the motion, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, look, I'm having support motion as a result. Some of the stuff I didn't count before the horse, but that's fine, yeah, wherever it's possible and, and.
Excuse me, ma'am, I have my hand up, that's all right. I'd just like to ask you questions. I get, but I just like to ask. No, that's okay. This is just a little aside, we're talking thirty to fifty, I've said I support it and that's fine, a thousand dollars for a feasibility study, but is this something, question to a general manager, that we could do without having to use consultants for a feasibility study? Could we just do public consultation? And I'm sure if there's any objections, we would find out and leave it to the planning department to, and architects to work out what's going to be done. I'm just wondering, is there a sort of another process that could, could help us save that amount of money to put into the construction?
Through you, Madam Mayor. That's something we can talk about further generally budget process if the recommendation gets up a bit up. I think we would need some external support in determining how best to operate a, you know, a pool device and it's likely we would need some consultant help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis to close.
Thank you, everyone. I, I really appreciate the comments and, and it sounds like I also appreciate your support in, in leaving this motion forward. I, I, I have done a lot of speaking as long as, as well as many of you have done with, with members of our community. It has got a big thumbs up from many people and it is a very positive, hopefully will be a very positive outcome. Certainly we are of cultural sensitivities surrounding the Bluff precinct and we've already had some discussions about that. We will, we'll, we'll see how we can progress with this, but I'm really looking forward to taking a dip in the pool eventually. So with that, I'll close.
Thank you. I'll put the motion all eyes on paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? I will ask for a show of hands, those in favor. Councillor Hensley, councillor Lecop, councillor Murphy, councillor Perry, councillor Alexia, councillor Ennis, councillor Holster, councillor John, councillor Walker. Those against? Councillor Milburn, there's motion, there's Carrie, thank you. Item four is planning inquiry matters and we don't have any advice to give this evening. Item five is reports and item nine is to go some time between twenty three, back to consultation report.
So moved.
Seconda. Councillor Murphy, councillor John, councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Merely procedural, there's been a lot of community feedback and we'll now move into the next stage.
Councillor John?
I think every year we're getting better at this, getting the community to start to feed back to us and it's budget time, I think that's great. Great to see all the different subjects that people, topics that people have brought up. Certainly have to say that the four ways and shopping strips for speed reduction's been brought up in there and I know that we'll work through all that when we get to our budget workshops and we'll do a really good job in listening to the public and trying to make sure that the community's heard, so just a process that we go through and it's just getting better every year. Well done, thank you.
Thank you. Other counterpoints?
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion all eyes on paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried, yes. Item five point two is the financial assistance scheme round two for two thousand and twenty one, twenty two and you have the reported recommendations from the community, do you have any please?
So moved.
Councillor Murphy, thank you.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Oh, I forgot, councillor Murphy on first, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Yes, Mayor, it's all there in the report, so there's not much, but more to the end.
Thank you, councillor Murphy.
That's all there, congratulations to the successful.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councillor Holster?
It's, it was interesting during the financial grants this year, quite a few people were knocked back specifically because they didn't do their, you know, their previous grants, so it's a lesson for people that if you don't do your approvals for the previous grants of anything, you won't be funded until such time as I are. Doesn't go away.
Thank you. Other comments? I'll ask councillor Henry to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion all eyes on paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried, yes. Item five point three is recognition of achievements by North West Coasters and we have a recommendation there, do you want to move please?
So moved.
Councillor Murphy, thank you.
Second.
Councillor John, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Yes, Mayor, this was brought to us at a workshop. The recommendation is now for us just to provide incremental support for them to be able to move on to the next stage.
Thank you. Councillor John?
Yes, I'm sorry I missed the workshop, but very pleased to have read up on this and I think it's a great idea and. And couldn't be a better spot to, to, um, do something to honour the people that have done a lot of work in the areas. Um, obviously this is for the whole North West Coast, uh, not just Dimpore. And I think we're a good central location to honour people. So a great idea and I can't wait to see it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Yeah, I, uh, I, I agree. This will be a fantastic, uh, recognition of the, sort of involving history of, of our city and our North West Coast, of which, uh, there's probably not enough recognition of the people that have done outstanding treatments. So this will, uh, this will certainly, uh, puts, put, uh, Dimpore on the map in terms of, um, recognising those people and their efforts.
Thank you. Councillor Holster?
Yes, I think the ideas from the two components are exceptionally good. I think it will be nothing short of, um, for the tourists and visitors who are around the state to have a look at those parks when they're done. And I think it'll be a great thing for the city. Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Under the discussion notes, item five and six, I feel is terribly relevant. Where it will spark more appreciation of the history and culture. Something, and I hate to say this, we haven't done all that well as a council and I believe we need to do more in the future. So I was pleased to see that it was listed there for all to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Um, oh, so councillor Exeter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, I support this as well. Um, I did speak with the general managers earlier about where the parks might be placed. Um, and it could be something that's going to be discussed, a discussion point down the track. Um, it will be an asset for the council and something that we'll probably have to look after as well. Um, keep that in mind. Um, I'd like to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I will ask councillor Ennis.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, thank you very much for the councillor's comments. Um, again, as I said, it's progressing this to the next stage. Um, there's a lot of work still to be done. But as has been identified, it would be an opportunity for some recognition of people from the North West Coast. And there's no better spot than here in Dimpore for that to be done. So I'll consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes on the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six is information. It's quite long. It's workshops and briefing sessions held since the last council meeting.
So move.
Second.
Merely procedural, Mayor.
Councillor Holster?
I think the discussions we had on the very same sort of very interesting and I look forward to further updates.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Murphy, close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All eyes on the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point two is the national report. Should you have a moment, please?
So move.
Councillor Exeter, second one.
Second.
Councillor Milburn, thank you. Councillor Exeter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, again, you've been quite busy with the federal bond. Just wanted to make a mention then for the fellow councillors of the year. Uh, you and I did, uh, did a tour of Maryford in East Dimpore and, um, I was pretty blown away by the, the circuit they have there. I'm sure the fellow councillors would be too. Um, it's quite a unique thing that they, that they do. They have support and disability in their, in their cares. And then they give us some job and it's something that we should be very proud of to have in Dimpore. Um, because they, the company themselves could have been situated in Melbourne, Sydney, other big cities, but they chose Dimpore to be their choice. Um, so it's, it was something to point out.
Thank you. Uh, yes, it was certainly an eye opener. Um, and the other councillors are hard to, to be certain, to be able to organise some events that involved very specialised support for people with mostly severe disabilities. So they make chairs specifically for them, they make beds for them. And it's all done out of Dimpore, you know, support factories, museums and I had no idea of it. So it's just amazing. Um, and it's something that we should be very proud of that as they export their, um, bespoke built equipment all out of it. Um, so thanks for that reminder, councillor Exeter, that was, um, yeah, certainly an eye opener. Any other comments, questions? Uh, councillor Milburn, sorry, you seconded it.
Busy as always, really. Nothing to bother.
Thank you. Anything else?
Question, question, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, the Aberord and Federation Committee, they're opening up, what's about signage? I think the signage for the Tasmania now, Aberord and this, um, Dimpore around town really needs a better signage, I think, from millerage around places like that.
The committee is, um, for, I guess, pushing that, um, that item, um, looking to, um, get more signage. Most of the places where they want to increase their signage, their visibility are these, um, stake government boards. So, um, there's some options that I can do.
So I'd like to go as a stakeholder.
And that would be, yeah. Councillor?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, you, you probably have, I believe, missed one very important one off there is the fact that, uh, that you met with, um, Zoe Smith.
Yes.
And I think it's worth noting that, um, that it's, it's, you know, as the general manager has done in his report, um, the finalisation of those matters between Zoe Smith and the Crown have now occurred. But I also think it's worth mentioning that, um, that, uh, the attention that you received during that period was unjustified and unwarranted. And I think that needs to be noted.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Um, are there any other comments, questions? Um, councillor Exeter, close.
Yes, I think usually councillors look up and say, um, consider it closed, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes on the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point four is the general manager's report. Do you have a moment, please?
So move.
Uh, councillor, councillor Perry, thank you, councillor.
Um, yes, the general manager obviously has been very busy. There's fairly happening at the moment. Um, it'd be interesting once we give an update in relation to Julie Booths and the conversations around that in the not-too-distant future. Um, and it's good that, that Bosque Constructions are also sort of having conversations with the council uh, around what's occurring.
Councillor Perry?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, just in relation to item one point four, if I just ask the general manager on the glass and sort of read it, in relation to the GoFundMe campaign that Zoe had set up and was dealing with Ryan Partners in the distribution of those funds. And it says, and the, the distribution of these funds to the affected family will now commence. Have they actually commenced? Has money actually left the GoFundMe account to the families as we sit here tonight? Or is there still like an abeyance period, if you like, before it happens?
It's through you, Mayor. All of the legal challenges and complexities that, um, have delayed the process have all been resolved and signed off. Uh, and I understand Zoe and Ryan Partners have met with each of the families and have discussed with them how the money will be transferred, as to whether that's actually happened. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure at this point.
That's nine families.
Nine families have all met with Zoe in their legal, legal reps. And that occurred here this building last week, so let's name it.
Last week?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, sorry, wait before.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I will ask.
Yes.
Councillor Murphy, sorry.
And thanks, Mayor. It's, it's also worth noting that, um, Mr Gavin Pearce, MP, one half million dollars of federal government funding for the Light and Sound Show. So, um, again, moving in the right direction. Having said that, consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes on the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point four is the community services report for January and February. Do you have a moment, please?
So move.
So move, thank you. Second one.
Please second.
Thank you, councillor Exeter. Councillor?
Yeah, very detailed report, a lot going on in that space also, Madam.
Thank you, councillor Exeter.
Yes, I've been, yeah, Carol's put a report there for January and February. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Perry?
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, we continue to excel in the community services space. And full credit to Carol, I guess she was taking up the cardge after we lost Karen to the Hillcrest Recovery Committee or, or similar. So that one under Carol, let's get up a good word. Thank you.
Councillor Ennis?
I just, thank you. I'd just like to note, uh, the, uh, the, uh, success of the BAT discovery, uh, sessions. It went very well and hopefully we could have some more.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? Councillor Milburn, close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes on the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point five is the general manager people and finance corporate services report. Very, very, very helpful. Do you have a moment, please?
So move.
Councillor Murphy, do you have a second one? Second. Councillor Milburn, thank you. Councillor?
Uh, again, a very detailed report and again, heading in the right direction. Actually, this report also may be able to help Mr Janey. Um, Mr Janey, the multi-story car park, um, is up on budget by thirty-three percent. So I think that's a fairly positive number. Um, moving forward for the multi-story car park, uh, it has historically, um, the, the number of two years ago, um, it probably wasn't achieving that. So I think it's turned around and, and it's now sort of getting up to sort of roughly where it should be.
And who, councillor?
Uh, what you said, councillor Murphy, nothing for the doubt.
And then we have other comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Murphy, please.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All eyes on the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point six. Conventions and arts report, conventional arts reports for January and February. Do you have a moment, please?
I move. Second.
Councillor Perry? Councillor Milburn? Councillor Milburn? Councillor Perry?
Um, a very good report. Again, we lead the way in this space, uh, not only on the North West Coast, but probably in the whole North of the state, if not the whole state. So good work to Geoff and his team and Dimpore certainly getting a reputation, getting a reputation of becoming a fine convention and arts, um, city, if you like. And, and, and rant arts, I guess it's not part of the convention art report, but, uh, in the art space, we're certainly filling a big void that the North West Coast has had for some time. Congratulations to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Perry. Councillor?
Uh, yeah, I wholeheartedly agree with councillor Perry. It is good. We are not just within the region, but within the state, starting to become a leader in that space. Um, and, you know, as, as we learn to adjust living with COVID, I, I think we'll see a, you know, an even more, uh, greater return to, to more events and looking out there on the big screen, what's coming up. It's very exciting in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? Councillor Perry, the last gift close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All eyes on the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point seven is the energy expenses report for October, July and February. Do you have a moment, please?
So move. Second.
Councillor Blakop and councillor Murphy, councillor?
Nothing to add here. It's all in the report.
Councillor?
Merely procedural.
Questions, comments? I'll ask councillor Aycock, which is close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. Motion. All eyes on the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point nine is the annual progress report for January and February two thousand twenty-two. Do you have a moment, please?
So move.
Councillor Holster, thank you. Do you have a second one?
Second.
Nothing further to add, so with the report, but everybody's agreed.
Thank you, councillor.
Uh, yes, Mayor, the report does, uh, it does indicate that we are tracking it very nicely.
Uh, it does and I'd just like to make stuff on the, on the change in the setup of the, the report. So, uh, which we've heard. Thank you. Are there any comments, other comments, questions? Councillor Holster, close.
Just to state that we're obviously doing extremely well compared to anybody else as far as A and O R T goes. Um, so we're close.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes on the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item seven is section twenty-three of the communities and the annual reports in that space. And we've asked for a move to the enterprise session.
So move. Second.
Councillor Holster, uh, councillor Murphy, councillor Perry, any points you might have been?
No, nothing.
Oh, I don't think.
I'll put the motion. All eyes on the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried. And that brings, um, the organization of this, as I mentioned, item six point eight. Um, thank you for the one and it was the one that we're just discussing.